It is now 7:00 PM. We're going to go ahead and start our city council meeting. Roll call, please, deputy clerk.
Alderman Guzman, absent. Martinez.
Here.
Felix.
Present.
Newsom.
Present.
Turner.
Aye.
Donnellworth.
Present.
Florian.
Present.
Hayes.
Present.
Bolton.
Present.
Mayor Taylor.
Present.
Madam Mary of Acorn.
Thank you very much. Today, we have a special invocation given by servant leader Dr. Michael Harkett from Eternal Life Fellowship Ministries. Welcome so much and thank you for being here this evening. We appreciate you coming.
Most gracious heavenly Father, first let me say thank you. On behalf who are gathered here today, thank you for your many and abundant blessings. We thank you for life itself, for the measure of health that we need to fulfill our callings for sustenance and leadership and friendship in our community. Father, as we gather here today in this meeting of the Waukegan City Council, we humbly come before you with hearts filled with gratitude and hope. We acknowledge your presence among us, guiding our deliberations and decisions for the betterment of our community. Father, grant us wisdom as we discuss the matters of importance that affect the lives of our fellow citizens. May discussions be marked by clarity, understanding, and respect with diverse viewpoints. Help us to seek solutions that promote unity, justice, and prosperity for all residents of this great city. Father, bless each member of this city council and the mayor. Bless them with discernment and compassion that they may lead with integrity, humility, and give them the courage that make decisions that will uphold the values and fairness of equality and prioritize the needs of the most vulnerable among us. Father, we pray for our first responders, our police officers, our firemen, and many others behind the scenes of this great city. From our city public work departments, to our 911 call center operators, to our teachers and school cafeteria workers, and most of all, Father, for all the citizens that are gathered here today to speak on behalf of our community. We lift you up, oh God. We lift up our city of Waukegan, its residents, its businesses, its institutions, and may your peace reign in our streets and in our schools, and may your guidance inspire our leaders and guide and grace and sustain them throughout. Father, we also come together today in prayer for the victims and the families affected by the recent hurricanes across the southeast of our country. We ask that you continue to provide comfort to those who are grieving, strength to those who are rebuilding, and hope to those that are facing uncertainty as another hurricane approaches. Father, we ask that you surround them with your support and love, and may they find the healing in the days ahead. Father, help us to always remember the broader communities and the people beyond our own, recognize our shared humility, and the importance of extending our compassion, aid, and solidarity to all those that are in need. Father, once again, bless this council and all those that are gathered here today. Guide our hearts and our minds as we seek to build a future of hope, resilience, and opportunity for all. For we pray this in the name of the one who is, the one who was, and the one who is to come. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for coming to the October 7th city council meeting. As a reminder, you can all get the agendas the Friday before our meeting on Monday. Please take the opportunity to see what's going to be voted on, and you can get any information by going to waukeganil.gov. I think we'll wait until the end. Is Chief Paser available, or do you want to? Yeah, we'll hold off on him. Some general remarks that this month isn't just about Halloween, folks. Spooky treats and/or tricks and sweet treats. It's also time to recognize an abundant amount of causes that are important. October marks several awareness months, including breast cancer awareness, ADHD awareness, blindness awareness, world bullying prevention, domestic violence awareness, and national crime prevention. Please take the opportunity to honor these nationally recognized initiatives by advocating for and supporting these critical causes. For those of you who don't know, Trick or Treating in Waukegan will be Sunday, October 27th, from 2:00 to 5:00 PM. Keep an eye out on social media. We have things posted all over. But this is just a great month for there's a lot of Halloween events going on through the Park District. And again, there's trunk or treats, so just keep an eye out on social media for all the things that are going on. I also want to remind all our residents that the seasonal yard waste collection runs from March 15th through December 15th. So that means that you have to have either stickers that you've bought for the season or that you have bought that you're putting on the garbage bags themselves. You can do the prepay. You can do whatever ones. Remember, burning, waste burning is strictly prohibited. And it doesn't matter if you're in the wards that are a little more rural. It's still prohibited. So that means leaves, brush trees, brush trimmings, paper, garbage, or combustible materials is illegal on all public and private property within the city limits. That brings me to, I'm sure some of you have seen it on the social media. We now have put on our calendar for the fall leaf pickup. Note of when your ward pickups will be. Get people to say, "I put it out and they came the day after." What I will tell you is the garbage trucks actually have cameras, so they know whether that pile was there the day that they were there or not. So just keep that in mind. The Lake County Tree Planting Program is a comprehensive initiative that extends beyond Waukegan. We kicked that off last week. For some of you who saw us doing some tree planting, in total, 403 native trees will be planted across six governmental entities in Lake County this fall. The project is funded by a $1 million grant from the Illinois Department of Natural Resources and is part of a larger three-year plan to plant 1,000 trees. Here in Waukegan, we are looking for tree ambassadors to help us with the city's tree planting program. We're looking for individuals to join the maintenance part of the program to help monitor the health of the new trees. A component of our tree ambassador program is to walk the areas of the newly planted trees to assist the city with monitoring the growth and notify the public works department if a tree requires attention. Volunteers will collaborate with our public works department by being onsite to assist the forestry division as they plant and mulch the trees together. So this is a great program. If some of you even have Boy Scout troops or Girl Scout troops that would even like to do this, this is a wonderful way for them to be involved. The program addresses multiple environmental concerns. One is storm water management. Trees can absorb the thousands of gallons of water during storms, providing a cost-effective solution to flooding issues. The climate change migration, the program's aimed to combat rising temperatures and improve air quality by increasing the urban tree canopy. And biodiversity restoration, that is, the initiative focuses on planting native trees and species that are crucial for local ecosystems. And lastly, replacing lost trees. In Waukegan, many of you remember when the ash trees all got the ash borer in them, and we lost thousands of trees in the city. So this is a way to combat that, and it's the first time that we've had a substantial grant to make some difference in that. Again, people forget that we get these 100-year floods now. Trees help absorb a lot of that water. We have gone more to a concrete city where we put up impermal surfaces by extending our driveways, whatever. We need to make sure that we still are protecting our environment by keeping a tree canopy, but also by having it absorb water. The alternative parking ordinance requires vehicles to park on the odd-numbered side of the street on odd calendar days and the even-numbered side on even calendar days. The ordinance is strictly enforced by the Waukegan Police Department daily from 12:01 AM to 11:59 AM. So that's, for many of you, there's been some confusion that it basically goes into effect right after midnight and ends right before noon. In effect for over 30 years, the ordinance improves safety during the winter weather and helps identify abandoned vehicles year-round. During snowstorms, this system allows public works crews to clear streets more quickly and efficiently, ensuring safer and drivable roads. Noncompliance with the ordinance results in a $25 fine. It also helps us in the summer months when we have people that stay overnight and we need to know who these vehicles are and what it is. We have changed the alternative parking over the years. It used to be a different time. This is what it is and has been for, I believe, three years now? No? Not quite a year? Okay, I thought it was longer than that. Okay, I want to make sure that you mark your calendars. That the Waukegan Fire Department Open House is in recognition of the Fire Prevention Week and the celebration of their 175th anniversary on Saturday, October 12th. That's this Saturday from 11:00 to 1:00 at Waukegan Fire Station 5, which is located at 3221 North Green Bay Road. On-site activities will include fire engines, ambulances, and airport crash vehicles, special equipment displays, fire extinguishing training, vehicle extradition demonstrations, and fire sprinkler demonstrations. And of course, you can meet our great firefighters and paramedics. As always, you can find more about our city events on our city's calendar at waukeganil.gov and on our social media pages. You can sign up for e-news notifications on our website or by mailing the city at e-news@waukeganil.gov. One last thing I want to remind people of is there is a November 11th Veterans Day Parade at 10:45 that kicks off in downtown Waukegan. It's on Washington and Genesee and goes to the Veterans Memorial. If you would like to be part of the parade, you must contact the city and let us know that you want to be part of that. So it is Monday, November 11th. Okay, that's all the comments I have. Deputy clerk, we want to move on to the next fun part of the evening. This is fun. The Resolution 24R-248, celebrating the 150th anniversary of Larson Florist. Can I have a first and a second?
First.
Alderman Newsom, who is the second?
Our second.
Was that right, Alderman Donnellworth? Okay. So Newsom and Donnellworth. I will have deputy clerk read it, and then we're going to present it to you.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number 24R-248, celebrating the 150th anniversary of Larson Florist. Whereas Larson Florist was established by the Larson family, who purchased 15 anchors in Waukegan in 1874 after immigrating to the community from Denmark and began farming produce for sale both locally and into Chicago, marking the beginning of a longstanding legacy. And whereas Larson Florist began producing cut floral crops, such as this beautiful one right here and what I'm advertising here, during the 1930s, and a floral shop was added to the business. And whereas Larson Florist saw great growth during the 1940s to the 1960s under the guidance of the third-generation owner, Raymond Larson, and his contributions led to the establishment of the Bank of Waukegan and the establishment of the first flower delivery room at Victory Hospital, now Vista, as a memorial to his great-grandfather, great-grandmother, rather, Dorothea Larson. And whereas fourth-generation owners, John and Kay Larson, served on the Victory Hospital Board of Directors, aiding in the planning and executing of multiple fundraisers, including the Festival of Trees, and donated to the building of the YMCA in Waukegan. And whereas Raymond Larson, John Larson, Katie Larson, served Waukegan as past presidents of the Rotary Club of Waukegan, representing three generations of the Larson family to hold this position. And whereas John Larson and Katie Larson have actively served on the Board of Lake County Chamber of Commerce. And whereas Larson Florist operates a full-service florist year-round with 15 greenhouses and an onsite mum field, and supplies bedding and garden plants for both retail and wholesale customers throughout northern Illinois and southern Wisconsin. And whereas Larson Florist has been a proud Teleflora International member for the past 60 years and has been instrumental in fostering global connections through a network of floral shops and operate nationally and internationally for floral deliveries, bringing a touch of Waukegan to the world. And whereas Larson Florist has been a symbol of trust and reliability for five generations, and their involvement is a testament to Larson's ongoing commitment to our community. And now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Ann B. Taylor and members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois, do recognize and celebrate this milestone. Be it further resolved that a suitably embossed copy of this resolution, signed by the mayor and city clerk, be presented to Larson Florist in celebration of their 150th anniversary, adopted this 7th day of October, 2024.
Before I call you up, we're going to do a roll call on this because it was a resolution. So can we do the roll call and then we'll do the presentation? Deputy clerk, can you do the roll call?
Absolutely. Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donnellworth. Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Motion passed.
I just want to say, you know, Larson has been here forever. And I don't think it's the city without Larson Florist here. So on behalf of the city of Waukegan, we are so proud to present this to you. And honestly, it just gives me great pleasure to see you and look at our next generations. Are you going to still do the flowers? Rose bushes, you guys have rose bushes like no one else has, so you have to do rose bushes. Promise me that. That on behalf of the city of Waukegan, thank you so much. Come on, you got to get your picture taken. They want to see it. I have to say, I'm a sucker for a young man in a tie. They're just so beautiful. Thank you.
We're going to go on to the city of Waukegan. I guess Sheri too?
Good evening. My name is Nicole Large, grant writer for the city. I've got, introduce yourself.
Sheri Martinez from finance.
With me as well. Just a few slides for you this evening.
You're going to have to talk loud today.
Will do. Here we are. We can jump to our first slide. We were with you last fall, and we wanted to give you an annual update of the grants program we are administering and amplifying. We have always had a very strong grants profile here at the city of Waukegan in terms of public safety, which is currently being amplified through this initiative. One thing that you're going to see on this first slide, I'll just take a step back. Here in the first few months of fiscal year 2025 is we have already submitted over 15, we have already awarded, received awards for over 15 grant applications. Last year was a successful year in fiscal year 2024, as you can see. The grants that we have been awarded is 22 grants. And we look to see that number potentially surpassed. The dollar value of the awarded grants, oh, next slide, please. Thank you, Ron. The dollar value of the awarded grants thus far in fiscal year 2025 is just over $10 million. So we are administering a lot of grants currently between nine departments, and that is actually a large feat for the city. The amount of departments that are involved in the current grant program has been amplified. So you're seeing a lot of investment, not only in the awarded grants throughout the city, but also a lot of the city staff are also administering these grant programs that have not necessarily been a part of the grants program in years past. So there's been a large uptick in grants, education, and grant administration, and department head investment in making this grants program a success. Next slide, please. So just a synopsis on the look back. So fiscal year 2024 was a success in itself. We had notably three new funders, and with any financial profile, you'd obviously want to see some diversification. We had some foundations enter our grants profile, and we had 14 new grant programs. So although you see some smaller awards being brought into our city, they also do count. We see that the relationships are multiplying, and that $5.2 million speaks towards that those grants awards being managed today. Next slide, please. So in fiscal year 2025, which as we all know, we're just about reaching that halfway point, we currently have 16 awards representing that $10 million amount. And notably, we have five new funders, relationships to the city, and five new grant programs that we are administering. Next slide, please. And so far, the mayor spoke of our two tree grants that are being planted across the city this fall. We have all wards receiving trees, mostly natives, that are going to be planted on city property. And obviously, we've had a wonderful infliction of the benefits of trees, so not just beauty, but health equity across the city. And we look hopefully to receive trees in the future in similar capacities from grants. And we have received our first U.S. Department of Transportation award, the Safe Streets for All program. We're continuing to build upon successive of our existing programs in the police department and fire department. Those two departments had wonderful grant programs, and many of their programs are continuing via renewal programs handled by Karen Kay currently, and she is managing a lot of those federal dollars and state dollars that the city continues to pursue. We are diversifying the types of funding sources and programs that we are implementing, so not only government funds, but also foundation, and the grant programs that are being developed by many different city departments. So currently, we have the most departments ever involved in grant-making, so nine administering grant programs in this fiscal year to date. So obviously, you'll hear me preach left and right if we ever have a cup of coffee together. That grants are an investment. They take time to not only plan that application, but also then administer for potentially a year or more to come. And your departments are doing a great job administering these new grant programs. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much. Onto audience time.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to call the first and only three speakers here. Jesus Ruiz, Margaret Carrasco, and Rayon Edwards. You can come up to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor, members of city council, fellow citizens of Waukegan. My name is Jesus Ruiz, and I serve as the dean of the Lakeshore Campus here in Waukegan. And I am pleased to provide you with a brief update on our campus. The Lakeshore Campus was the first in the CLC systems to return to pre-pandemic enrollment numbers last year. Today, we are proud to lead the system in year-over-year growth with an impressive 26% growth in enrollment. This semester, we have grown to serve over 1,200 students a semester, a significant achievement as we continue to expand our programs and reengage with our community. Notably, African-American student enrollment has increased from 7% to 11%, a milestone we are especially proud of. The College of Lake County continues to invest at the Lakeshore Campus and support the revitalization of our downtown Waukegan. Some of our current projects include the renovation of the childcare playground, rebuilding roofs, and our parking garage renovation. In addition to our infrastructure improvements, the Lakeshore Campus values partnerships with community, governmental entities, and non-for-profit organizations. These collaborations have brought over 10,000 visitors to the Eleanor Murky Community Center in the past 18 months, introducing thousands to Waukegan's beautiful lakefront. We are also proud to host the Cole Children's Museum this semester and the senior section of the Waukegan to college program. Looking ahead, our next major project is the Urban Farm. With a projected building budget of $15 million, the majority of which comes from private funds, we are just $1.2 million away from meeting our goal to break ground. We expect construction to begin in the late spring or early summer of next year, with completion anticipated by fall of 2026. The Urban Farm is a testament to the trust the college has built within the community and influential funders who believe in the potential of our city. I would like to extend my gratitude to the city of Waukegan, our alderman, especially our fourth ward alderman, chief of staff Bridges, and Mayor Taylor for their own wavering support, particularly during the renovation of our parking garage. I hope your pride in your college is as vibrant as mine. And I look forward to our continued collaboration and to the many celebrations and achievements come to our city and our college. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jean Ruiz.
Ms. Margaret Carrasco.
Good evening. My name is Margaret Carrasco, and tonight I would like to draw attention to one of the mayors who she's publicly bragging about accomplishments is new business to Waukegan. But what she fails to mention is the type of businesses specifically that she's bringing into the south side of Waukegan. And I brought pictures to prove it. If you recall correctly, the Glen Rock and Belvedere location has had a checker pass and where the former owner was restricted for beer and wine. In fact, Alderman Florian, you and Ann opposed to the gaming casino initiative, okay? And so it appears very inconsistent that the approval of two more, two more liquor stores on the south side of Waukegan on Belvedere Street totaling four establishments within a two-mile radius in a predominantly low-income minority residential area. in a predominantly low-income minority residential area. Furthermore, saturation of on Belvedere, that corridor, the last thing we need is more liquor stores, okay? The other one is on Belvedere and Green Bay Road. If you look at the picture, this is where the car wash is. So what she's doing, Ann, her new businesses that she's bringing to Waukegan she's bragging about, I wouldn't brag about, I think that's the last thing in the world we need, is gas stations now are becoming liquor stores. If they had a grocery store there, if they had a car wash there, she is turning them into liquor stores. We do not, that is not a good thing for Waukegan. I'm sorry, I disagree with you in, in doing this, okay? Another thing is that, one of the things that you were critical of is that going around and to those businesses that have applied for liquor licenses, that have applied for permits, that have applied trying to get inspections done. Why, Ann? We have awesome pictures of your husband Wayne sitting right there, going around specifically just to those businesses. So what is the message we're saying? And also, your right-hand man, I don't see him here, George, going around. We have great pictures and on video also, going with their little petition sheets. So if you want a liquor license, is the message that you're telling me is we have to get signatures for your campaign, Ann? Because that's illegal.
Thank you, Ms. Carrasco. Mr. Rayon Edwards.
Good evening, everybody. Tonight is the one-year anniversary of that terrible war that started overseas. So I'm just gonna ask that everybody keep on praying for everybody that's involved, all parties. Tonight, I'm gonna say something, and I really want to talk to all of my alderments that's up here tonight, even the ones that's missing. We got elections coming up next year, local elections. I'm so sick of some of y'all playing that in-between, not leading like you should lead. So I hope these mayors that's running for office next year, I hope y'all make all of these alderments state publicly who they're supporting. You know, as I go back through history, I noticed that we don't do that here, for whatever reason. I remember supporting Ann's campaign, and when she won, I watched some that was over there with Sam called and said, "Congratulations, you know, I stayed out of it." You know, we playing that in-between so that no matter who wins, we in good grace with all. Stop it, be leaders. We could talk about who we supporting federally, we could say it locally. And I'm expecting that from all of you alderments, and I will be watching. If you cannot lead us and tell us why you're supporting whoever you're supporting, we gonna make sure we remember that when it's your time to go to the polls. And that's serious. And as we're talking about lead, you know, the violence is getting so ridiculous in Waukegan. I have a video on my social media where some guys went and they stole some plants. Plants, flowers, out of a lady's yard, her home. It's ridiculous. Like, you know, it's funny, but it's sad because Waukegan is becoming a shit show. And I ain't gonna put it all on the police because it, 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 it got to be more to them. It got to be help. And I hope everybody that's listening tonight is paying attention, y'all. Ain't nothing good gonna come from us. I don't care who we like politically, I don't care who we support politically. If we stay in Waukegan, we got to do something. Lot of everybody going in different places, and we praying. Well, to all of the church folks that's listening, all my life, I've known faith without works is dead on arrival. And so, baby, if all y'all can do is pray and sit and just wait on something to happen, ain't nothing ever gonna happen. Get up and do something, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Mayor, that concludes your audience time.
Thank you, Deputy Clerk. Okay, onto consent agenda. Can I have a first and a second for the consent agenda?
First.
Alderman Turner, second. Alderman. First item. Motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from Monday, September 16th, 2024. Item B, a motion to approve the Little Fort Lions Club request to hold its candy days on October 11th and 12th and October 18th and 19th, 2024, in accordance with the Lions of Illinois statewide fundraising. Item C, a motion to approve and ratify regular payroll dated September 20th, 2024 in a total amount of $2,1883.55. Item D, a motion to approve and ratify miscellaneous payroll dated September 20th, 2024 in a total amount of $25,668.65. Item E, a motion to approve and ratify regular payroll dated October 4th, 2024 in a total amount of $2,104,448.65. Item F, motion to approve and ratify miscellaneous payroll dated October 4th in a total amount of $125,137.88. Item G, a motion to approve vendor payments dated October 7th, 2024 in a total amount of $3,366,043.76. Any questions to these motions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Martinez. Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donalworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Onto new business. I'm going to, if you want to, you can do an omnibus for this. But I would like to probably pull out item D because some part of that was held over.
They, they, they didn't vote on it because it's gonna have to come back.
Okay, so item D is a holdover, so that one we will pull out? D. That was the, yeah, compensation claims. I, I need F pulled out.
I'd like A pulled out, please.
I, we're gonna, yeah. I, you need a two-thirds vote anyway. So should I just read all of them, or do you wanna? Okay. Item A, can I have a first and a second?
So moved.
Okay, item A, so Alderman Hayes, who's the second? Alderman Felix. Okay, an ordinance amending a conditional use permit for a recreational cannabis craft-growing establishment at 99 West Greenwood Avenue to update the applicant information. So for those of you who don't remember, this goes back quite a while ago to the Green Goddess that had the building off of Greenwood. This is just changing management of it. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donalworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Can I have a first and a second to item B?
I so move.
Second.
Bolton's second was Alderman Martinez. This is a resolution approving a professional services agreement for the Opportunity Collaboratives for Workforce Development Feasibility Analysis and Recommendations with QBE Advisors and Insight Strategic Concepts for an amount of $51,400. Any questions to the motion? Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donalworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Item C, can I have a first and a second?
I so move.
Okay, Alderman Bolton, who was the second?
Donalworth.
Donalworth, Alderman Donalworth, was that the second? Okay. Okay, a resolution approving a business development agreement between the city of Waukegan and Classic Automotive, Inc. at 425 North Green Bay Road. This is an extension of a contract that they have had with us for 20 years, and this would extend it for another five. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donalworth.
Aye.
Florian.
No.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you. We're skipping item D. Item E, can I have a first and a second?
So moved.
Alderman Martinez, second.
Second.
Alderman Donalworth. This is a resolution approving a settlement and release of all claims for fire department workers' compensation claim 221220W017 for an amount not to exceed $87,326.75. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donalworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Item F, I'll take a first and a second to the resolution, and then we'll do a discussion. So can I have a first?
I so move.
Alderman Bolton, second.
Second.
Alderman Hayes. This is a resolution approving a settlement and release of all claims for public works workers' compensation claim 22, or I'm sorry, 230308W019 for an amount not to exceed $83,669. Any questions to the motion? And for those of you asking why Alderman Florian left is she is one of the treaters of this particular claim, so she had to excuse herself. Roll call, please.
Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donalworth.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Item G, can I have a first and a second? Alderman Newsom, a second.
Second.
Alderman Donalworth. It's a resolution approving the repaving of the city-owned parking lot at the northwest corner of Washington and Butrick by LePardo for not to exceed amount of $32,060.37 per Section 2-458I3, which is joint purchasing through Sourcewell. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donalworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Item H, can I have a first and a second?
So moved.
Alderman Florian, second.
A second.
Alderman Bolton. This is a resolution approving the purchase of a 2024 compact track loader from Burrus Equipment for not to exceed amount of $75,299 per Section 2-458I3, joint purchasing through Sourcewell. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donalworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Item I, can I have a first and a second?
So moved.
We just did H, I. Can I have a first and a second to the motion, and then we'll do discussion?
Aye. I mean, so moved.
Alderman Florian is the first, second?
A second.
Alderman Bolton. Director Garland, can I come up and have you talk about this a little bit? Because this is a good faith waiver, and I want you to explain why it's a good faith waiver.
The current one that we have is out of commission. They are not able to repair it, to satisfy to where we would be able to use it, and it would be safe for us to use. So my fleet supervisor went out and did an assessment of some forklifts that we can use for this winter, because this is mainly what we're gonna be using it for, to move our plows and the different trucks and things around with. So he went out, did an assessment on some, and found this particular one at this particular company. And it's way cheaper than the one that, that we have now that has a wait time of about six, seven months. So if you think about it, winter is over with, but we need it right now.
Are any questions to the motion? Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
No.
Donalworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Seven to one, motion passed.
Thank you. And I did not read that one. It is a resolution approving the purchase of a PFY100 pneumatic tire forklift truck from Apex Material Handling Corporation for an amount not to exceed $46,450 per Section 2-458I7, good faith waiver. Item J. I need a first and a second on this, but I also would like clarification as to what this, it's not detailed.
This was the one that we changed.
It was one of the aldermen's, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Alderman Turner.
Yes, so. Yeah. Alderman Turner, do you want to review again what were the?
Yeah, basically, we, there were.
I had a motion in the second.
Okay, we'll do the motion first.
Motion.
Alderman Turner, second.
Second.
Sorry, would you like to explain it now?
Yes, ma'am. Excuse me. With Alderman Felix's concurrence presented this motion to remove the parking restrictions, I think it's a 400 block of Clayton, on Clayton between Genesee and County. And there are equal to about, I think, is it six parking spaces? And there were signs up, no parking was allowed on either side of the street. And we have a new business down there, the Juice Bar. They specifically requested that they open up parking because their customers couldn't park anywhere. And so we had discussion on this with Chief of Staff and I, Alderman Felix and I. And we agreed that we would open up parking as described in this ordinance. There will also be allotment for two parking spaces for food trucks, and that would be at the west end of Clayton, right near County.
Just one question I have, does this include like the part of Clayton where the Genesee Theater is, when they have shelves, it's not that, right? And.
It's, it's west, west side of, west of Genesee.
And then is there a spot available for our police car?
Yes.
Okay, good, just to clarify.
And I, I forget, did we decide parking meters, no parking meters? What's the time limit? Who's gonna enforce it?
I thought we decided on parking meters, but they haven't been put in as of yet. I was down there a couple of days ago, and I don't know, it's gonna be four more meters. I don't know if it's really a significant need, but that's what we agreed to.
It's not necessarily about the revenue, but about making people move, you know? Like, we're not gonna have someone who's gonna be able to stand there and say, "Oh, your 15 minutes is up, move." So the parking meters will help. Because of the Juice Bar, I'm guessing not many people hang a long time. They go in, they get their stuff, they leave. So it's not gonna do any good if someone can park there for six hours and they can't go in the Juice Bar anyway.
It's all planned for metered parking. Roll call, please, on this?
Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donalworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Clerk. Now, on to Alderman time?
Thank you, Alderman Martinez.
Well, that was quick. Thank you, Madam City, thank you, City Clerk, and also the council members. As the mayor indicated earlier, it is time for the leaf pickup. For the third ward, it would be on October 28th and the 29th, November 11th and, and November the 12th. These both are Mondays and Tuesdays. Please rake your leaves forward to the front of the curb, and then they'll, they'll be able to pick them up. Also, there will be work done in the alley between Leaf and Berwick Boulevard. So just to give you a heads up, as I receive more information, I'll be more than willing to share that with you. As the, also as the nurse, excuse me, as the mayor indicated earlier, the Halloween hours for Waukegan will be Sunday, October 27th. That is from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. And finally, I'd like to give a special thanks to Chris Garland in the city of, in the Public Works Department for the project completion Public Works Department for the project completion of the roads on Flossmore and Neimery Avenue. Getting a lot of compliments, a lot of phone calls from happy residents that thank you for that. It is easy accessible compared to how it was before. There is a huge, a huge improvement and so I thank you and we are all grateful for that hard work that you guys put in it. And then I have much more to say, but I also, I also attended the Amano Amano Gala this weekend. I fully support their vision, the mission to empower and assist the many underserved in our community. You all know Amano Amano continues to build its tradition and such history by giving and caring. I do wish them well and continue blessings for a bigger and brighter future. So therefore, thank you for that. And if you need to get ahold of me, I can be reached at 847-390-2689. That is all I have for now. Just ask that you be safe, you be mindful and you all have, be a good neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Martinez. Alderman Felix.
Yes, thank you. I want to thank all the constituents that have been calling me. All of your input and your suggestions and your pictures, the, of things that need to be fixed around the ward, they do truly help out. And I, you know, I want to say thank you for, for being patient as well because they have a lot of calls coming in. I had a constituent call me today, Rob Pross, great constituent, calls me all the time. You know, there is a problem with, uh, with people getting into car crashes, especially in Brookside, so it's been noted. And we're gonna look into it more than anything. Traffic control devices are approved, so you know, please reach out to me to have your input. If you guys are hearing me from, from my, from my ward, the fourth ward, please reach out. That way I can have some of your input. Have some ideas where I want to put some devices. And we'll be looking forward for people to reach out for those. Thanks. Thank you to the council for approving the lot there on Lot N. That's the one on Buttrick and Washington. Has, it's been forever since anyone has, uh, looked into that. You know, that's my job to look into areas in, in my ward that need attention. So it's going to be done, I'm so happy. You know, we've recently, thank you to Public Works, the whole team, they've been so responsive as to the requests that I've been putting in. And I thank you to Chief Bridges as well for, for giving me his time to get these things done and avoid my concerns. I, I meet with him, you know, no less than every two weeks. And, and I give him a whole list of things that we got to get done and they've been getting done. So if you guys drive by Washington and Buttrick, the trees have been cut higher so people can feel safer to park over there. Now the lot is visible. And we have trash cans there, is a high traffic area. Now we have trash cans where people, you know, they go to the bars, you know, what, there's a lot of trash that used to be there, now there isn't. I went, drove through there, there isn't as much trash as before. So it's, these things that I was, that I'm focusing on, low cost, high impact. It keeps our, my area clean there. There's other projects that I'm looking into. I'm so happy that, you know, I want to share with you, but until those things get done, I'll, you know, I'll keep you guys updated. On Edison Court, there is a lot of abandoned vehicles. I'm looking into, a lot of the Alderman have, you guys have access also to the Waukegan Munich Code, I believe it's called, where you guys can look at all of our ordinances and see if anything can be done to a problem that you think, you know, is either eyesore or an issue that you want to bring up to the city. You can always look at our codes and see if we can have code compliance, Public Works or any of our departments look into it. Again, huge thank you to Public Works. Thank you so much for being so responsive as well. Huge thank you to Animal Control. They did a fast response to an issue in my ward with a constituent that had their dog bit by another dog and they went through the whole process. They were such great help. So thank you to the, to Animal Control. I did also attend the Amano Amano Family Resource Center's annual gala. Saw a lot of great other politicians there, a lot of other community members as well that are in the community. So I support their, their mission as well to make and help immigrant families or Hispanic families come into our, our community and be more productive members. Also attended a grill and chill from George and Regina Moore in my ward in the fourth ward. They are a true example of what a non-for-profit, how much a non-for-profit can make an impact in the community if they, if they work hard and do the right thing. So shout outs to them. I did go to a North Chicago Ward meeting for the fourth ward in North Chicago. It's good for me on my end, I'm going out there to see how they are running things. You, and you get, you actually, you actually get to know what other projects they're doing together with Waukegan, so it's good to know. And I'm taking notes and see how we can bring some of the positive things that they're doing there over here to Waukegan. And there is issues in our parks where people are, homeless people are there, you know, doing things that they shouldn't be doing. And I've been getting a lot of complaints. I'm looking into it. I did find out that the park district does have their own security. So I'm going to look into that and see how we can maybe communicate more issues that, that were, that constituents in my, in my ward are having. Maybe they can help out with that. And, you know, a lot of people have seen, we have an art program. We did some of the streets. Now we're looking into doing some of the walls around the downtown. And I've seen a lot of great work. So shout outs to the community development team. Rachel, she's been doing a lot of good work there. And that's, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Felix. Alderman Newsom.
Thank you, Deputy Clerk. Just wanted to mention the leaf pickup for the fifth ward. It's going to be Wednesday and Thursday, October 23rd and 24th. They will stick as close as possible to those dates. We'll see if we have any leaves on the ground by then. Usually rain will come and knock a lot of them down on the ground. So they'll stay as close to the schedule as possible. That's October the 23rd and 24th. And then the next pickup will be November the 6th and the 7th. That is Wednesday and a Thursday as well. That's all I have.
Thank you, Alderman Newsom. Alderman Turner.
Thank you, Deputy Clerk. So in the sixth ward, we had neighbors inform me that there have been two shootings in the sixth ward within the last month. One at Upton Park and another incident on the 1000 block of North Jackson Street, it's about three blocks from my house. A total of four people were shot. Find it interesting, nobody mentions any of the shootings or public, public safety issues that occur with repetition and frequency in Waukegan. But I'm deeply concerned as are my neighbors. You know, I'll be speaking more about that at my upcoming ward meeting. Excuse me. Leaf pickup matches with Alderman. Newsom stated for the fifth ward, same for the sixth ward, October 23rd, 24th, November 6th and 7th. Now that we've come into an end of summer, we're not seeing as many, having as many yard sales and garage sales, but there are still a few. I want to remind folks that yard sign, yard sale, garage sale signs and political signs do not go into the city parkways. They should not be placed on telephone poles or light poles or anything, any city properties. And again, we kind of look, turn our head and give some latitude to the garage sale signs and so forth, but please remove them after your event. When your yard sale is over, garage sale is over, go out and pick up the same signs that you put in place. As for the political signs, put those in your yard, not in the, not in the parkways. Another issue that I see often, not, not so often, but it occurs, that is what we might call a street memorial where someone has been killed in an accident of some sort. I know it's, uh, it's really becoming a problem at the corner or the intersection of Glen Flora and Sheridan Road, directly, that would be the northeast corner there. Someone died in an accident last year and family loved ones are coming and they constantly putting up these flowers, marijuana bongs, liquor bottles and balloons and those things. And they leave them there and, and they stay there for weeks. And for a while, I was going by there because the neighbors had asked me. I went by and I would remove that stuff, but I'm not doing it anymore. So now it just sits there. If your loved one has passed on, please do not create street memorials. They become, after a while, they just become unsightly. All right, also in the sixth ward, we have had several streets resurfaced. Franklin Street from Jackson to North Avenue, Ash Street from Julian, or correction, from Grand up to Ridgeland. Ridgeland Avenue from Jackson to North. And now we're working on North Avenue from Julian Street all the way to Glen Flora. I ask that you be patient. They're working diligently and a lot of people, a lot of people call me and say, hey, they, they tore out my, the apron to the driveway where they didn't finish putting it back and there's a, a crack there that they haven't filled in. And I just, the, the process is that they remove this, the, remove or replace the curb lines and those aprons where needed. And then later they tear out the street and resurface it. So when the project is done, when the street has been totally replaced, those cracks up to the, right by the approach apron will be filled in too. So be patient. Do you know what they're doing and they're getting it done. That's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Turner. Alderman Donnellworth.
Thank you, Deputy Clerk. I want to thank all the city department heads and of course, all the city employees that are just working their butts off, helping me out, helping the whole city out. They have replaced the roads in Coville, Poplar and Ash. They've done a fantastic job. The residents are giving me a call time and thanking, thanking me for helping get it done. And I just want to thank all you who did it to realize that, that they really appreciate what you did. Also, the leaf schedules I posted multiple times on Facebook and, and on other things. And please make sure you rake the leaves as close as you can to the curb. And what you need to remember also is you remember when we get these piles of leaves, you got to remember, these kids love to play in these leaves. And so I hate to have somebody run over a pile of leaves and have, have a kid playing in there. So think safety first. Had a meeting with the neighbors in the 2200, 2300 block of Western on Saturday. We discussed what everybody's talking about, the speeding cars, the ATVs, motorcycles. And they're saying the cars are speeding up and down Western and that whole area. Then of course, with the bike path there. And when anybody tries to stop anybody, all they do is take off. I've notified the police department and they said they're going to see what they can do and work on it and try to catch these individuals. I also told them, I said, please, if you see where these people went, please, you know, call the police and tell them. Because if we can identify the ATV, identify the person, then we can arrest them and take it. Alternate parking, again, 1201 to 1159. Please move it and be on the right side. And I believe that's it. Again, thank, thank you, everybody, for what you're doing here.
Thank you, Alderman Donnellworth. Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Deputy Clerk. I was here at City Hall on Thursday briefly for the nonprofit meeting that the mayor holds every, every month. And I met Alexandria, I'm going to say Cedar Gren is her name. There is now an affordable solar program being pushed by the state in the, in this area. Eligible owners will pay no upfront costs to install solar. And this program ensures that all income eligible participants see savings on their energy bills. And it, it also ensures fair and safe business practices for the installation of the product. So the eligibility runs from a household of one at fifty-eight thousand dollars all the way to a household of six at ninety-six thousand. So those are pretty generous numbers, I feel. So please feel free to contact me. I've got her phone number, the website. Owners of single-family homes or multifamily buildings are eligible with the approval of the owner of the building, of course. And so anyway, if, if you want more information about this affordable solar program, please let me know. I also wanted to update everyone. We had mentioned a few months ago, we were talking about the median earnings of women versus men and the numbers for 2023 just came out. So median weekly earnings for women were eighty-three point six percent of men's earnings, full-time, year-round earnings. On average, women working full-time, year-round are paid eighty-four percent approximately of what men are paid. Women are paid less than men at every educational level. Doesn't matter if it's no, you know, high school education, all the way up to the highest degree you can have. Also, there's definitely some issues with race. The wage gap persists across all the major race and ethnic groups. For example, in 2022, this is a little older number, black women ages forty-five to sixty-four earned sixty-four percent what a white, non-Hispanic man earned for the same work. Sixty-four percent. Hispanic women aged forty-five to sixty-four earned fifty-one percent. They did even worse than the black women. Same, same work, same education. And it increases with age. Whoops, sorry, I hit something I shouldn't hit here. The gender pay gap increases with age with women ages thirty-five to forty-four and forty-five to fifty-four earning eighty-three percent as much as men of the same ages. Jobs with the smallest gender pay gap are physical and social service jobs. Maybe women need to think about going into those types of work more in the future, but it would be nice if it was just equal across the board. Anyway, I just wanted to verify those numbers so people were updated on what was happening. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, Alderman Florian. Alderman Hayes. Pass. Thank you, Alderman Hayes. Alderman Bolton.
Okay. Leaf pickup will be October 19th. I'm sorry, correction. Leaf pickup will be October 30th and 31st in the first ward. And then, and remember, these are projective dates. They won't, you have to leave some leeway for some flexibility. So the other projection will be November 13th and 19th and November 27th and 29th. And then I want to just reiterate the fact, what Alderman Florian had mentioned, there's a flyer in reference to saving money by installing affordable solar program. And as she already indicated, eligible homeowners will be paid no upfront cost and the cutoff will be April 30th, 2025. The flyers are out there in the hallway. Also downstairs on the first level, want to bring to your attention recycling guidelines in my ward. I, weekly, Public Works, thank you, are constantly picking up mattresses and furniture and every day I get calls and they're out. So these are the guidelines of how to recycle items. Also in our, out there with flyers, there's a program called Ride. And this service is open to seniors sixty and those with disability. They provide extra transportation. Lastly, there is a fourth pastoral anniversary, Pastor Brown, congratulations. Three o'clock Sunday at 210 South Avenue, congratulations, celebrating her anniversary. And then OMA, in the first ward, we have a program, OMA is called Harvest Market, which is addressing those that need a food. They're located at 502 10th Street. They're doing an excellent job in serving our community and every week the line gets longer and longer. Also, they have a annual celebration. OMA is having their, on the 26th, a program, celebrating their existence. And then I want to acknowledge our city clerk, Jenica Connelly, how they've shared with me today, a device that they have purchased is called Pocket Talk.